We're going to call the meeting to order at 7:07 PM. Special meeting of the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School Committee here on Wednesday, April 4th, 2018, at the Rainham Middle School. Just want to note that this meeting is being recorded by our Rainham channel. And thank you all for attending. If you could first please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you for coming. Just want to introduce our school committee here to my far right. School committee member Tony Galphy, school committee member Mrs. Julie Scluparis, and Mrs. Lil Holbrook, our vice chair, Mr. Michael Dolan. To my far left, Mr. Jason Hammond, Mr. Kevin Marrera, Dr. Susan Pruwendowski, and our superintendent, Mr. Derek Swenson. I'm Pat Riley. And sitting over to our my far left, our school committee secretary, Mrs. Judy McDougall, our Director of Business Services, Mrs. Kathy Macedo, and our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Ryan Powers. Again, thank you very much for coming. We have one agenda item this evening, and that's the adoption of the fiscal year 2019 school committee budget. Just kind of this is the order that we're going to take things. Dr. Pruwendowski is going to give a report based on the budget subcommittee's meeting last night. Then she will make a motion for the adoption of the school committee budget. Then we're going to ask Mr. Swenson to comment on that and give us some details about the proposed budget. Then school committee members can comment, and then we'll open it up to open forum if anybody in the audience wants to address, comment, address the committee or comment or has any questions, and then we will take the vote. So with that, I turn it over to Dr. Pruwendowski.
Thank you. On last Wednesday, March 21st, we did our school committee budget hearing presentation. And at that meeting, we did receive feedback from the town of Bridgewater that they would be lowering the amount that we had requested. So we also met last night, April 3rd, as a budget subcommittee. And we took the number that Bridgewater felt that they could contribute, and we subtracted the Rainham equivalent, and we came up with a budget number. There was lots of discussion amongst the budget subcommittee. We had some public input, and we came up with a final budget number of $70,192,410. We are required to accept the amount that the towns give us. We don't just get to write a check for any amount that we want. Mr. Swenson can go over the details of what needed to be cut to come down to this number. I don't think anyone on the budget subcommittee was excited about this number, but we respect the process. And that being said, let me read the motion. The budget subcommittee recommends that, subject to review and verification by the district treasurer, the school committee vote to approve the final budget for fiscal year 2018 to 2019, excluding debt costs as follows. Maintenance and operating costs, but excluding debt costs, in the amount of $70,192,410. The final budget figure of $70,192,410 is to be reduced by anticipated revenue totaling
Twenty-four million.
Million. Million, I'm sorry. Twenty-four million, six hundred ninety-three thousand, fifty-four dollars, leaving the amount of forty-five million, four hundred ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars to be paid by the member towns as follows. Rainham's apportionment of said costs is to be the state's required minimum contribution of $13,318,750, plus the nondiscretionary charges of $4,596,180 for a total due from Rainham in the amount of $17,914,930. Bridgewater's apportionment of said costs is to be the state's required minimum contribution of $20,755,678, plus the nondiscretionary charges of $6,828,748, for a total due from Bridgewater in the amount of $27,584,426. The apportements of the nondiscretionary charges are based on the enrollments in the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District as of October 1st, 2017. And I make a motion to ratify the FY '19 budget as stated above.
Motion by Dr. Pruwendowski. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Dolan. And under discussion, Mr. Swenson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I echo the sentiments of the budget subcommittee. It's been a difficult week trying to figure out exactly how we were going to get down to approximately another $2.2 million from the preliminary budget, where I'd already cut close to $6 million at that point. Some difficult discussions were had over the course of the last week between myself and Mrs. Macedo, and along with Dr. Pruwendowski and the members of the budget subcommittee. With that being stated, one of the biggest pieces to getting down to this number is that in my preliminary budget, we had sixteen and a half positions. We were able to get that down to eight, and unfortunately, we're not going to be able to add any new positions. So the classroom positions to lower class sizes, and you know, the counseling positions, which are really concern to us at the district level, considering the amount of social-emotional issues that we are experiencing district-wide at all grade levels. So all of those positions are now off the table. With that, we still had considerable amount to reduce. We are going to be looking at central office departments. We're going to have to do some reorging there, and that is going to result in some reductions of administrative positions at the central office level. We're also looking at a teacher in the district due to retirement that will not be filled. Will absorb that salary through attrition. We're also looking at when we fill teachers' positions through retirees and hiring incoming folks on a lower rate on salary scale. We're looking at a savings there of approximately $100,000 as well. The biggest piece for us right now is that we have to tap into one of our revolving accounts. And the revolving account that we are going to be tapping into is going to be our school choice account. And just a little bit about, and we've mentioned this last night at the subcommittee meeting, revolving accounts really should not be utilized to keep afloat operational budgets. They're really truly there in case we have issues throughout the district that come up that are not budgeted for in the previous year and allow us some cash flow opportunities throughout the school year that maybe later we can then go back to the town and ask to be reimbursed. One example would be here at Rainham Middle School. Two days before school let in this year, the phone system went down for $20,000. That was not budgeted for. We went to one of our revolving accounts, which was our facilities account. We were able to put that phone system in and then ask for reimbursement from the town of Rainham during their next warrant cycle. And they were able to reimburse us, and we were able to put that money, those monies back into that revolving. School choice, we're going to be taking out $568,986, over half a million dollars, to keep this budget afloat. Basically, what we're going to do is utilize that money to pay some of the salaries of teachers over at the Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School. The high school is the only school within the district that has school choice. We can orderly utilize those funds to offset those costs at the high school. With that being said, and this is what I stated last night, I am concerned about that. I'm concerned because next year at this time, we're not going to have another half a million dollars in that account. We're going to start bringing in school choice monies soon with students that choose to attend Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School over the course of the next four years. However, next year at this time, we will not be able to get up to that amount. Point being, next year, we're already going to be starting our budget season, a half a million dollars in the hole. So even though with these moves, we're able to limit the amount of layoffs, I do, I am fearful for next year's budget and future budgets after this because of this financial practice that we unfortunately are being forced to put in play. With that being said, in those difficult decisions, no new positions, some positions through attrition and reorganization, and again, the utilization of the school choice monies, we are able to make this number with limited layoffs. However, it will result, as Mr. Dolan made very clear last night, some administrative positions, and also a situation with a teacher within the district who is retiring, whose position will not be filled. So even though it's not a true layoff, it is a reduction in force, which will then in turn impact class size. So that's basically where we are in terms of getting down to that number of $70,192,410.
As Dr. Pruwendowski said, we as a school committee don't have any control over what the bottom line is. Many years ago, school committees used to have fiscal autonomy, and school committees did, but that went by the wayside many years ago. So we are dependent upon what our two towns give us in addition to state funding. We have full control over what happens within the budget, but that bottom line is beyond our control. And yet, this committee is obligated to come up with a budget. Because come July 1st, if we don't have a budget, then the state steps in and goes to a one-twelfth budget, which would be every month, one-twelfth of the current budget, which would be even less than what's proposed. So that would be even more of a nightmare situation, not that what we're proposing is by any chance a good situation, any measure, a good situation. Comments? Mrs. Holbrook.
Mr. Swenson, is this budget that is being adopted tonight level funded?
In terms of, no. It's actually a little bit less.
I just want to let the community know that myself and Mr. Swenson and Mr. Dolan and Mrs. Holbrook, we did take the town up on their offer to meet with the accountant on Good Friday. Derek, he knows his day off, and ourselves took a personal day or what have you to meet with him and go over the towns, where they came up with their number, how they came up with their number, why they came up with their number. They are putting together a capital expenditure budget on the end. We're not the only department they have to fund, and they are going to maybe consider looking, taking some of our capital expenditures that we discussed at the last meeting and putting them into their budget, but that's, it's still the same basket of eggs. So, you know, they are going to look at that. We are trying, but like Mr. Swenson said, it's not going to get prettier unfortunately. And this isn't our favorite, but it is what it is.
Thank you, Mrs. Scluparis. Any other committee members?
Yeah. I'm disappointed that we can't get the social-emotional support, and I think is more important even than class size. That's my personal feeling.
And you're saying that is not only a resident and a school committee member, but as a teacher?
Yeah. I'm wondering, is, I know we talked about it last night, and I fear of repeating, but can you explain that maybe there might be something coming from, was that not?
I think what we'll have to do is look at the retirees that we are retiring and the positions that we are filling. Look at the salaries, salary scales we're bringing people in on. And if there happens to be any wiggle room at that point, I would really advocate for, if we're going to prioritize anything of those eight positions that were actually cut out to get that social-emotional support in through our social workers, or a school psychologist, or a school adjustment counselor. Most likely with that situation, we might look at, say, like a collaborative and look at possibly vendoring out that contract. That way, they're not necessarily our employee, so we're not on the hook for the benefits piece to it. So we'll get it somewhat of a lower rate, not fully where we would want to be, but that's definitely something. And I think you made a great point last night, Mr. Galphy, when we met with FinCom from Rainham, as a teacher. Some of the class size issues that you experience, obviously, we always want lower class size, but if we have those social-emotional supports in place for students within those higher class size dynamics to, when they become dysregulated, to have some type of support to help them become regulated so that you can still do your job as a teacher. And I think that was a valid point, that even though class size might go a little high, if you have some of those social-emotional supports, it makes it easier for teachers to handle some of those higher numbers.
Mr. Swenson, how critical do you think that service is in our district? Obviously, it's a situation not unique to Bridgewater Rainham. Do we have many instances of students needing that assistance?
Oh, yeah, unfortunately. During the preliminary budget, I provided some data that was provided to me through Nurse Leader Marie Fahey. Last school year, I think there were close to 6,000 referrals to our school nurses for social-emotional issues. Of those 6,000, 1,000 of those resulted in referrals to school adjustment counselors, school psychologists, or social workers. And unfortunately, last year, we had about 76 hospitalizations district-wide of our students. So, yes, and again, as I stated in my preliminary budget and a few other of our meetings in the last week, that's not a Bridgewater Rainham issue. It's across the Commonwealth and unfortunately, across the nation. So, you know, we're seeing that high, the uptick of social-emotional, mental health issues, and, you know, unfortunately, we do not have the capacity right now to fully handle the cases that are happening within the district. So again, that was one of my big pushes in my preliminary budget, and the subcommittee saw that as a need and, you know, put it in the second round of the budget that was presented at the budget hearing. And then unfortunately, with the news that we received that night, we had to go back to the drawing board and again, cut about $2.2 million over the last week. So unfortunately, when you don't have any more things to cut, and we did cut a lot of resources, materials, technology out of this budget to get down to that number, you have to look at people. And unfortunately, it was the new positions, and then unfortunately, some current positions, and again, utilizing that revolving account. But again, I would just state that it's not a good financial practice to utilize, because we can't always be dependent upon that, because that coffer's not going to be filled next year with that amount of money to offset next year's budget, so.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Any other comments? Mr. Marrera?
Madam Chair, if I could have the floor for a minute or two. I'll try to be brief, because I know Mr. Swenson's already covered a couple of the items. Being the first year that I've been on the school committee, this is the first time I've actually gone through the budget process. And seeing it from a parent's point of view, from before being on the committee, it's totally different to being on this side of the table. I know the superintendent's preliminary, his budget requested 16.5 new hires. Knowing that there's continued financial restraints in the communities that support us, the superintendent streamlined the budget to only eight new hires. Even with the streamlined, his version that was streamlined, the request of a local contribution is still not able to, still not able to be met. So what does this mean? The monies that were, the monies that are promised to the district make us have to rearrange the line items, as was put forth last night in the subcommittee meeting. So there's a couple of things that I just wanted to emphasize on. No new hires. This includes out of the eight that Mr. Swenson had gone down to, the much-needed grade one and two teachers, high school history teacher, an additional school psychiatrist, and adjustment counselors, which are greatly needed in the time that we are, in the time that we're in, you know, and not just here, but across the country. One thing that really bothers me is approximately $500,000, a half a million dollars, are being moved from a reserve fund, a revolving account, to offset the teacher's salaries so we avoid some layoffs. This is good for this year, but as Mr. Swenson stated, depleting for these funds this year is only throwing a Band-Aid on the situation, which is going to make us readdress this situation again this upcoming year. A retiring teacher and not, and not having the hires behind that retiree, that's also trouble. So I don't know if a lot of people understand this, but the district sets forth its overall annual assessments, and they use the number of 2.5 percent. Historical data, and this is not something that I'm just coming up with, I actually pulled the historical data. Over the last six years, again, the school, the school department requests 2.5 percent in assessments from the local communities, this is overall between the two communities combined. Over the last six years, we've only been able to reach two point, this is an average, 2.287, causing a 1.278 shortage over a six-year period, which equates to loss in growth somewhere between $800,000 to just shy of $1 million, you know? And that's including the oversized amounts of influx with that into the communities between all the houses that are also all being built. So this data that I was able to pull from, it's a 15-year timeframe that goes all the way to 2004. So six out of those years in 15-year period, we weren't even able to get from the two towns combined, even break a 2 percent threshold. And we asked for a 2.5 as a cap. We weren't even able to break a 2 percent threshold. In 2004, again, we asked for a 2.5. We only received between the two communities, .363, not even a half a percent. In 2010, we didn't even break zero. We actually took a loss that year of 1.358. That was a zero assessment in 2010 that came from the communities, the school district. So if you look at the historical data, the budget for that year actually went down lower than the year before in 2010. You know, and, and I don't know, you know, I, obviously, I have children in the system. I have some skin in the game. I don't know the people that hold the purse strings, if they have skin in the game. But one thing I hear it floating around over the last couple of weeks is, you know, that some people have been tying the budget operational, the money that we use annually, to the project for the new school in Bridgewater. And I've been trying to emphasize to people that these are two separate issues. So please don't let the excuse, you know, please don't accept that excuse that if we need some more funds, that it's going to offset the school project. It's not. I try to explain to people that it's two separate issues, and taking away from our operational funding annually and justifying an excuse that we can't give more because more's going to the school should not be an excuse that people should be listening to. You know, our children are invested in our future. We need them, we need to set them up for success, addressing not just the here and now, which I feel that's all we're doing, we're going from year to year, putting this Band-Aid on, but we need to also address everything that the future is going to bring. Operating from year to, operating from year to year and hoping and praying to get the funding that we need to operate and only receiving just a certain amount of what's told that we're getting is honestly a waste of time to yourself, to Mrs. Macedo, for actually taking the time to put together a budget of this magnitude to get the school, get the schools on the right path. And I just find it very, very upsetting to me and disheartening that even though we create a budget, the entire thing that you created and pitched in January got thrown out the window. We're actually going to lose. We're losing. We're not even gaining anything from that budget. So in my opinion, you know, if we're going to make the time to create a budget, we should at least try to get things in the budget that we need. Because if we're not going to actually get anything that we need, we should just turn the budget over to the communities and say, then you do it. Because obviously, you're going to tell us anyways at the end of the day what you're going to give us. So I won't take up any more of your time, Madam Chair, I just needed to get that off my chest. This is very, very upsetting. I wish it was different, but obviously, it is what it is.
There's only one thing that I would slightly disagree with you on, Mr. Marrera. Whether you have children in the school or not, everyone in the district should be invested in our schools. Public safety is important, but what is more important than the education of our children and our young people?
Absolutely, Madam Chair.
Any other comments? Mrs. Scluparis.
Yeah, I just, last night, we talked about, a little bit about what happened at the Rainham Finance Committee meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Swenson, Rainham was willing to come closer to the number that we were looking for, but they can't because Bridgewater can't. Is that an accurate statement? Or could they gift us? Could you give the pros and cons?
In terms of last night's meeting, when we originally met with liaison from the FinCom, we started with my preliminary budget, and obviously, that was a bit much to digest for at that point. So I kind of did the exercise that we always do where we go by down by a million, a million and a half, and whatnot. And we got to the number that Dr. Pruwendowski presented last week. And our feeling leaving that meeting is that it was something that Rainham could possibly handle. When we went to the meeting last night, again, they stated to us, they were kind of waiting on Bridgewater, and we explained what Bridgewater could provide us in terms of assessment. The meeting turned a little bit. There were some folks that were quite angry in the room. There was a discussion about it, and, you know, we basically stated to them, you know, that would reduce their assessment to about 2.88 percent. So it's that one-two punch. When Bridgewater can't handle it, we have to through the regional agreement, lower Rainham's. Did throw out there, we did on our end, you know, the possibility if they could handle something greater than that, and they stated, you know, they very well could handle that 2.88. They didn't balk at that. We talked about, you know, in the past, they had gifted monies. Now, they did not state last night that they would gift, but we did discuss it a little bit. When we came back to this table during the subcommittee meeting, it was asked about the gifting of money. That has happened in the past. Some of the pros and cons, pieces to that, I guess from the superintendent's standpoint, I have to think regionally. I have to think about all of our kids on both sides of the district. That's my responsibility. However, I realize that if one side of the district is willing to gift, those resources have to go to that side of the district. Those monies have to go to support that side of the district. Now, it's difficult for me as the superintendent to see kids possibly on one side of the district sitting in classes on a little bit higher class size, or maybe not having that social-emotional support, having some of the resources and technologies that a gift could provide. Another concerning piece when you talk about gifting of monies, that gift might only be for one year. So when you do that, similar to what we're doing with the $500,000 taken out of a revolving, if you're going to utilize that, those monies for positions, you have to make sure that it's sustainable in future budgets. Or you could buy or purchase, one-time purchases, technology, resources, you know, from an instructional standpoint, and utilize the monies that way. And then that way, it doesn't have that impact to future budgets. So that would, that would be something, if that conversation does develop down the line once Rainham realizes exactly where we truly are, and they said for us to kind of circle back with them to let us know where we are. If that conversation does have, that's something that we'll have to really contemplate, and again, do the pros and cons of that, and see if that's a direction to town, we as a registered.
I think it's fair to say, Mrs. Scluparis, that the Rainham Finance Committee didn't actually consider what we were requesting. They were waiting to hear from Bridgewater. But it's also fair to say that they were not really pleased with the level of services in this budget.
Yeah, a public member asked about the gifting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good question, though. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Dolan?
Last night I had asked this question, and I think we're going to pause. So we take this $568,986, the school choice revolving account. If we lower that to say $350,000, and we have more layoffs this year instead of, more layoffs and staff reductions, what does that do for us?
Well, we're just possibly increasing class size. Definitely, because I need, I'd be talking classroom teachers. And I understand where you're coming from with that, knowing that are we putting off this to a future budget where we're going to have massive layoffs? Are there things that we can do incrementally this year?
And again, I'm not advocating that.
It would result in, that, that obviously, $200,000 plus would probably result It would result in, that, obviously, $200,000 plus would probably result in an additional four or five layoffs, four or five positions, which then would impact class size. And we talked a little bit about that last night. And looking at some of the class sizes now, K8 anyway, because we're not getting those additional teachers, you know, some of them have been off real formative years, you know, K4, we're looking 23, 25, 23, 25, 25, 26, 24, 26, 26, 27. So, maybe with, you know, additional layoffs, that may result in 28 to 30. So, I think, Ms. Macedo made a good point last night, it's kind of a roll of the dice, cross of the fingers, and say, maybe next year, you may have more retirements. So, maybe that $500,000 isn't as painful as it necessarily is this year. So, I think, really, truly, we're willing to kind of risk that and take that gamble this year. And not that we're trying to push anybody out the door, what Annie means next year, that's not the point. It's just that folks might be at that time, or they're close to retiring, we may have more retirees this year, and through, hopefully not, further attrition by not filling, but at least filling at a lower salary scale. We can maybe kind of close that gap a little bit, rather than, you know, with layoffs. Plus, you take those out of the budget, it's tough to get them back in. And that's what we've experienced since, you know, the layoffs that we had back in 2009, 10. And we've done a great job, you've done a great job as a committee and as a district, to get those numbers back up. It's just getting to the point now where, without the support of the town, based upon too, and, you know, Mr. Marrera just spoke to it too, not just about, you know, it's not like our population's not growing. And I know, last week, Mr. Wood stood up and stated that, you know, the population is on a decline, in previous years, at certain grade levels. And mostly, it's at that high school level, when kids are exiting eighth to ninth grade, because now, a lot of students are going into vocationals, are becoming a lot more popular, not cultural schools, parochial schools, private schools. But, if you look at our K4 numbers, and that's what we did with the MSBA project, that we're currently in with the Mitchell, and we looked, and we started with cohorts of students, and we didn't do one kindergarten class compared to the next. You take that one kindergarten class, and you follow them on a longitudinal look, and you do that when they, from K to 1 to 2 to 3 to 4. And each of those cohorts, we're up by like 25 students, that's a teacher. So, when that happens, we have to hire more staff. So, when people are building homes, and we've said this over and over again, build it, and they will come, they're not building $500,000 McMansions to bring in empty nesters. They're bringing in, same way I moved to Rehnen, looking for communities to start a family. And that's what we're looking at. And it's more of our K4 numbers that are on the increase. And again, those are some formative years where you really want to keep those class sizes as low as possible. So, it's kind of a catch-22. When you build houses, and to generate, you know, revenue through a tax levy, and the tax levy does not fully support your budget, because you need more staff to handle those influx of kids. I think that's kind of where we're at.
And the interesting thing, too, is if it's families with young children or planning families, one of the reasons they moved to this area is because of our school district. Any other comments from the school committee members? Yes, Mr. Marrera?
Madam Chair, I just have one other question, and I'll make it very brief. Knowing now that we've adjusted the budget, again, I definitely do not agree with this budget. It's very concerning with some of the things that we're going to do to make it work, like the $500,000 to offset some of the salaries, and not having a teacher retire, and not doing a backfill retire, or some reduction of staff and administrative positions. Is there any way of going back to the town, saying, "Listen, we've done our due diligence. Can you at least meet these needs, so we're not starting in the negative next year?" Because I see this as a bad track record, you know? It's a non-healthy trend that we're forming. And if it's, and it's been like this for a couple of years, and now if we're going to start in the negative next year already, it's not going to get better. So, I don't know if they would be at least, even to communities, reassessing and looking at those numbers, just those numbers, and say, "Listen, we need to stay level. And right now, we're actually going in the wrong direction. We're not staying level, because we're taking $500,000 from..."
Well, I think the Bridgewater contingents met with the Bridgewater officials on Friday, and if I'm not mistaken, they're telling, they're not going to increase what they're giving us. But...
Was this already told to them, of what our...
We didn't talk about actual action steps to get to that point.
We didn't talk about actual action steps to get to that point. I know, in their mind, they're looking at, "Here's the number you got to get to, I don't care how you get to it, but..." I don't know if they realize the actual impact that this is going to have. You know, it won't this year, because we're making, well, it is this year, because we're not going to backfill a teacher, and there's two administrative positions that we're going to do. But, next year, we're starting in the negative. So, if it's rough this year, it's even going to be rough for next year.
The town council has to vote on the budget on May 8. I don't think there's anything that would prevent them from giving us more than we're asking for. And the town meeting in Rehnen votes, I think it's a third Monday in May, you know? They could also give us more than what this budget is requesting, either as a gift or in some other fashion.
I would say that, when we talked to Rehnen's FinCon last night, they did ask us to come back, when we had a clear cut number in terms of what Bridgewater could handle, like, we talked about it last night. But now that it looks like this is the number, we'll go back and have that conversation with FinCon and see where they are. I don't think, I don't see there's any harm in trying to reach out to Bridgewater and give an idea of what the cuts are, and see if that's going to change their mindset. But I can tell you, after that meeting on Friday, I don't see where they would get from it, because it's, for me, I don't think they're sitting on piles of money. I think it's just not there.
You know, and I just want to emphasize, one of the, of the talking points that Mr. Wood has, was first they look at, in their community, the layoffs. So, it's funny that they're saying that at the community level, but we're going to take it on the chin here at our level, and not know if we're going to rebound it from it in the following year. So, again, that's, I just, I feel like we're going down a slippery slope, and it's a very unhealthy trend that we've been on, and it's only going to get worse, snowball's getting bigger.
Yes, Mrs. Skelparis?
Yes, Mrs. Marrera? And to answer Ms. Harris' question, even before Friday's meeting, we went to the Finance Committee meeting, and it was on Tuesday, before our presentation on Wednesday, and one of the councilors under the question that there would be no current staff, and we did correct them and say there would be layoffs of the current staff. He thought it was only new staff. We didn't have the details at that time, but based on...
Because they were questioning.
Because it was actually, because they were questioning. It was actually Mr. Wood, at that Tuesday meeting, because he was convinced that there would be no layoffs.
A week later, we told him that night, and we're telling everyone again, there are layoffs coming.
And again, that's my concern. If we're doing this this year, we're cutting a couple of positions administratively, what's next year going to bring? We shouldn't be going backwards, we should be moving forward.
And I will say this, and I know that this was also spoken about the town council, about administrative positions. If anyone knows anything about this district, and all you have to do is get on the DESI website and look at it. This district, for the size, if it is, the amount of employees and the amount of students is an absolute skeleton proof when it comes to administration. My administrators do more in a day with less than anybody out there. And luckily, I have the most outstanding administrators around, so we get it done. But, it's getting more and more difficult when we do have to trim our administrative team, because again, as administrators, we look at it as, we're willing to make those decisions to sacrifice what we do in the course of the day, and make sure that our teachers have reasonable class size, so that those students get what they need and deserve each and every day. But, we can't cut anymore administratively. And, you know, for that individual to have made that comment, that why don't we cut administrators when we have difficult times? When I came into the seat at Bridgewater Middle School, the first thing they did was cut my assistant principal. And I didn't have an assistant principal for a year. We're constantly looking at what we can do from an administrative standpoint, to make sacrifices, so that we have monies in the budget to put directly towards services for our kids. So, again, here we are again, but next year, at this time, we're not going to have anywhere to go administratively. Because at the end of the day, that becomes a safety issue at some point. We need administration, we need folks that are not in the classrooms each and every day, to make sure that our schools and our districts is functioning, you know, effectively, efficiently, and safely.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes, Madam Chair, to piggyback on what Mr. Swenson did, I had a conversation with that councillor.
To piggyback on what Mr. Swenson did, I had a conversation with that councillor after the comment was made to Marrera.
And that gave me an insight on how much, some of our town councillors in Bridgewater, as a Bridgewater resident, are frankly out of touch, and don't understand. And what it's like to be in the schools with our administrators and our teachers.
What it's like to be in the schools with our administrators and our teachers.
They don't see the challenges that the district and our employees face on a daily basis.
And I'm, frankly, some of them, I don't think they want to. And I realize that may not be a popular thing to say, but it is what it is. I get the feeling that some of them are happier with liners. With this cloak over their face, that they don't have to think about it or talk about it.
So, it's frustrating to attend the council meetings.
So, it's frustrating to attend the council meetings.
I encourage all Bridgewater residents and Rehnen residents, so between now and May 5, the council takes their vote. There are three meetings.
April 10th, April 24th, and the vote is on May 8th, all at 7:30 at the Academy Building in Bridgewater.
Go and speak. Speak on behalf of your students.
Speak on behalf of your students.
Our teachers, on behalf of our communities.
Our teachers, on behalf of our communities.
We can only beat the drum so much.
We can only beat the drum so much.
Before we become that noisy dog. If you are passionate about public education.
If you are passionate about public education.
Education is local first.
Education is local first.
We have got to get to the council. And I say councils.
And I say councils. And I say go to the Rehnen meetings as well.
It does sound like that Rehnen is going to be able to meet their...
Not beating on the drum as loudly, I guess. Not beating on the drum as loudly, I guess, for Rehnen, but for Bridgewater.
We need to get people at those meetings to speak up. And I said this at the last meeting, education is more than just a teacher in a classroom now. Our town leadership failed to realize that, then we have to hold them accountable.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Any other school committee members, before I open it up to the public?
Any other school committee members?
Okay, anyone from the public wish to address this time? So, please approach the podium and just give us your name and address for the minutes. Anybody wants to ask a question or make a comment?
Anybody wants to ask a question, make a comment? You're welcome.
Anyone? All right. It is my understanding, Dr. Pruwandowski, that we do have to take a vote at this time on the budget.
Have to take a vote at this time on the budget.
All right, so there is a motion on the floor, and a second, any further discussion?
There's a motion on the floor, and a second, any further discussion?
Does not require a roll call vote, I don't believe.
Does not require a roll call vote, I don't believe.
Does it not? It does require a roll call vote. Oh, okay. So, then, I will call for a roll call vote in favor of, the motion is outlined by Dr. Pruwandowski.
The motion is outlined by Dr. Pruwandowski. Mr. Galphy?
Mrs. Skelparis. Mrs. Holbrook.
Mrs. Skelparis.
Yes, she was reluctant. Did you realize that?
Mr. Dolan, yes, she was reluctant.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond, Mr. Marrera.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond.
Mrs. Dr. Pruwandowski. And the chair votes, yes, as well, with a heavy heart, again, you know, I'm sure everybody on this board would want to vote no, but it's our obligation, our responsibility to approve a budget. So, that's what we're doing, not happily, but that is what it is. That's what we've been elected to do. I need one more motion. The following motion for ratification of the fiscal year 2019 debt vote. The budget subcommittee recommended that, subject to review and verification by the district treasurer, the school committee vote to approve the final budget for fiscal year 2019 debt cost as follows. Rehnen's cost will be bond interest and principal of $1,542,617.20 to be reduced by state reimbursement and grant distributions in the amount of $0 for total due from Rehnen in the amount of $1,542,617. I'm sorry, $1,542,617.20. Bridgewater's cost will be bond interest and principal of $2,7,637.34 to be reduced by state reimbursements and grant distributions in the amount of $0 for total due from Bridgewater in the amount of $2,7,637.34. Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Dolan, taken by Mr. Galphy. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Any post? So, voted. We have one more motion to conclude the meeting, to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Galphy, second by Mrs. Holbrook. All in favor. Any post? We are adjourned. Thank you for attending.